Dave Stuckey's not back, Connie. Oh, there he is.
There's Dave. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We we had some difficulty this morning. I failed to clarify with our court reporter that we needed her this morning. So it took us a little while, but she valiantly jumped in and is now set and ready to go. So is there anything we need to mention before going on the record? That request goes out to all the attorneys? Okay, hearing none. All right, we are now on the record. My name is Constance C. Owen, and I am the presiding officer in this case. This is a continuation of proceedings to resolve the City of Wichita's request to modify their aquifer storage and recovery project phase two permits. Today's date is February 5th, 2021. And I will mention that we are completely remote. The two proceedings, the two days before today, there was an in-person component. That is not the case today. So everyone is appearing remotely. And we also have a YouTube link that should be operational so the public can listen in and watch the proceedings as they happen. As I mentioned, we do have our intrepid court reporter, so there will be a transcript of today's proceedings. I will remind everyone that there are public comment opportunities. Written public comments will be accepted in this matter until 5:00 PM on February 26th. And those can be submitted either by email or regular mail to Rhonda Hutton at the Division of Water Resources. And her contact information, her address and email address can be found on the Division of Water Resources website. There is a special page dedicated to the Wichita ASR, and that's where that information can be found. We are reconvening today so that the City of Wichita may present rebuttal witness in this case. Before we get started, let's have appearances, please, for the city.
Brian McLeod, Deputy City Attorney for the City of Wichita, Kansas.
And for the Division of Water Resources.
Phoebe Murray for DWR.
And for the intervenors.
Tess O'William for the interveners.
And for the groundwater management district number two.
Tom Adrian and Dave Stuckey.
Okay, thank you. And without further ado, Mr. McLeod.
Madam Hearing Officer, I have a preliminary matter to raise with regard to what apparently is Mr. McLeod's intention to call rebuttal testimony. And so I would object to that based upon the following. In fact, I'm old enough to remember that our current code of civil procedure, when I started practicing law, was known as the new code because it had been adopted many years before in 1964. And the whole premise of the new code was fairness and avoidance of surprise and ability to know going into a hearing or trial what the evidence was. And in this case, Mr. McLeod will have to show to you the surprise that was brought about by the testimony, apparently by our experts, so that he can introduce testimony to address that surprise. The, and he has been quite resolute. And when we were offering direct testimony from our experts in confining us to the contents of our expert reports, which he's had, of course, for months, if not years. And so we, he's going to have to show you where there was surprise given to him in the testimony before he's entitled to introduce rebuttal testimony. Again, it is not an absolute right. It is a right earned by, by the showing of some surprise. And so hence, we would object to his testimony, offering testimony as to our expert testimony, as to our expert witnesses. The, the only testimony that was, expert testimony that was introduced in the last several days was from George Austin. And again, I assume that Mr. McLeod was continuing in his resolute effort to keep us, keep that testimony rather confined, confined to what was in the expert report. And so again, he has no surprise. He, there's, there was nothing introduced there that would necessitate rebuttal testimony. The he indicated some consideration yesterday of dealing with the testimony from the landowners or water right holders. And therein may lie some surprise if that's what he wants to address. But I would request that he be confined to that.
Mr. McLeod?
Did we finish taking appearances before Mr. Adrian threw that out on the floor? Or do we still have people who need to indicate their appearances?
No, I had everyone.
Okay. In response to that, I will just say that I recall back when we were fussing over the experts' reports, the district objected to the addition of rebuttal sections to the Burns and McDonald reports. And at that time, I believe your ruling was that those additions to their reports were appropriate. As you know, I have not put their reports in the record as exhibits simply because it is cumulative. If the witness is going to testify to the material, they have both, although the other parties have put in both, both expert reports and the testimony of the witnesses cumulatively on basically all of their expert testimony. So given that this was fussed over and you approved of the addition of the rebuttal information in our expert reports at the time, if we aren't allowed to introduce the testimony, the rebuttal testimony of our experts, we should be allowed to put in their full reports as exhibits so that their response to the opposing experts is included in the record. And the other thing that, really the only thing that we would propose to address this morning that was not covered in those rebuttal reports would be the, the minimum desirable stream flow information that Mr. Austin testified to extensively yesterday that I believe he acknowledged in his testimony, he had never actually used the words minimum desirable stream flow or, or put that analysis of impact on minimum desirable stream flow in his report. So in fact, all of that was testimony that came in over the city's objection that hadn't been in his expert reporter disclosure. So I would differ with Mr. Adrian's contention that there was no surprise to the city by any aspect of the experts of the district or interveners going outside the scope of their disclosures. However resolute I may have been in attempting to prevent that, I was not successful in the end. And material did come in, but was outside the disclosure in Mr. Austin's report.
I'm convinced by Mr. McLeod's response. I think that if what he intends to cover today with his rebuttal witness addresses the minimum desirable stream flow of Mr. Austin, which although in concept was addressed in Mr. Austin's expert report, was not specifically labeled and identified as such. And the fact that the expert reports for the city are not a matter of record, I think it's appropriate to allow testimony to go forward today. So I will overrule that objection. I'm sorry. Yes, overrule the objection. And Mr. McLeod, you may proceed.
Excuse me, I have two other matters to raise, if I may. I would like to, at the close of, of the city's evidence, back what now seems like a thousand years ago, we issued a, or we filed a verbal motion for what was characterized as a directed verdict, what if it were in a trial would be a directed verdict. And so I would renew, renew that motion at this time. I would also renew our motion to dismiss, which has been on file and had been taken under advisement by you at this time.
Mr. McLeod?
City continues to oppose both of the motions.
I am going to deny the first motion for what would be the equivalent of directed verdict. My goal in this case has always been to have as complete a record as possible. And we've come this far, and I think we need to complete that process. As for the motion to dismiss, the motion to dismiss remains under advisement. So there really is no need to renew it.
I have one clarification, getting back to our conversation about the rebuttal testimony. I understand that Mr. McLeod is confined in his rebuttal testimony to only that of George Austin. Is that, is that, is my understanding correct on that?
Mr. McLeod?
Well, my understanding from your honor's comments was different. I thought you had indicated that we also could put in the material that was covered in the rebuttal sections of our expert reports, given that they were not of record. And there really can't be any surprise since the district has, has had the rebuttal sections provided by our experts for a period of many, many months.
You know, I guess I'm curious as to why you didn't deal with that then during direct testimony.
I, I think if we were to look at the transcript and the direct testimony, both, well, Mr. McCormick indeed did critique Mr. Romero and Mr. Austin. And so our point is that these rebuttal expert reports were filed far in advance of the hearing. And per KSA 60-226, you can file a rebuttal expert report and respond, in response to an initial expert report. And in fact, you have 30 days, as I recall, having read the statute. And so as a consequence of that, since those rebuttal expert reports were already filed, that was fodder for the direct testimony and should have been so raised in direct testimony. And I think that's our first position here is that, and if anything, it's also cumulative in the sense that this has already been raised on direct now. Alternatively, so there's two different motions raising, that's, that's one, is to the extent we're just talking, talking about the initial rebuttal expert opinions, that was fodder for direct because it was filed something like over a year ago. Alternatively, to the extent we're talking about new opinions that are completely outside the scope of any of the original expert reports, then we have a separate motion and lemony that we're going to file that we'd like to file of record, but we don't know if that's even going to occur. So we'll have to wait to see what testimony occurs, but we've had no element of preparation to know if there is even going to be new opinions that will be raised. So if there's new opinions raised, then we have a second, a second motion that we'll be filing the moment that occurs. But our preliminary motion and lemony is just as Tom stated, that this should have been raised on direct if it's just merely talking about what was in the initial rebuttal expert report that was filed well over a year ago.
I would differ with counsel and their argument in the sense that normally rebuttal occurs after the witness who's being rebutted has testified. And while I think it is correct that, that Mr. McCormick in his direct testimony did speak to some aspects of Mr. Romero's report, I believe it is incorrect to suggest that he spoke to any aspects of Mr. Austin's report. I, I, I don't recall that having occurred, and if counsel can point out in the record where it occurred, I will stand corrected, but I don't think that it did occur. I think that we, in fact, at the time of closing the city's case on direct, said that the city intended to reserve rebuttal as to Mr. Romero and Mr. Austin after they had testified. And that is the reason why we didn't do it in our case in direct. And at the time, the district's counsel said absolutely nothing about the city reserving the right to call rebuttal witnesses for that purpose later in rebuttal. Nor did the hearing officer make any ruling saying, no, that would be precluded. In fact, I think the indication on the record was that the city's reservation of rebuttal witnesses was recognized at the time as appropriate and as something that we would be allowed an opportunity to do.
It has been my understanding and my intention throughout that rebuttal testimony would be appropriate and would be allowed to the extent that it is purely rebuttal testimony. It is not intended to be another opportunity to restate what has already been testified to. It is not an opportunity to get in the last word, so to speak. It is to respond to something that a witness testified to. I understand the concept of surprise. Again, we're not tied strictly by the rules of evidence. If there is something that was testified to that rebuttal is appropriate for, that was not addressed already, then I think it's, it's fine to go forward. The objections are noted, but again, I would point out that rebuttal needs to be limited to responding to new testimony that that is not simply a repeat of prior testimony by the rebuttal witness. So to that extent, I'm going to allow the testimony to continue. But if it appears that we are straying back into testimony that is not pure rebuttal, then I would entertain objections at that point. So Mr. McLeod, please go ahead.
Thank you. The city would call Mr. Paul McCormick to the stand.
Brian, does he need to be sworn in again?
I would like that.
Okay. I don't see him, so I'm assuming he's there. And he's not showing up on my screen yet.
Yeah. Mr. McCormick, we need to, I need to see you.
My camera is on and I can see everybody whose camera is on.
Okay, there you are. Thank you. I guess we needed you to start talking.
Sorry.
All right, sir, could I have you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give and the cause now pending will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. McCormick, were, were you watching the hearing yesterday as Mr. Austin testified?
I was.
And so you, you were present virtually for his discussion on minimum desirable stream flow?
Yeah, I was watching the YouTube feed.
Will you please refer with us to, I believe it's GMD2 exhibit number 68, which was Mr. Romero's expert report and which Mr. Austin also referred to, I believe, in his testimony yesterday. And look at figure four of that report.
Okay, I've got it.
Will you describe for us what that figure shows?
This figure is describing the difference in the model results based on the difference between the proposed pumping to the proposed index levels and pumping to the 1993 existing index levels. The, the orange or purple area there is, is the additional pumping. The blue is the river depletion and the gray is the aquifer storage depletion. And there's a fine green line in there that is the evapotransformation component.
Does the figure indicate that there will be 10 CFS less flow in the Little Ark at these pumping conditions with the proposed levels?
No, it does not. It indicates that there will be approximately 10 CFS from the Ark and the Little Ark. It does not differentiate between how much depletion there will be from each individual river.
So could, could we conclude from it that the river will have five CFS less flow in it every day that's pumping is occurring during a drought?
No, not, not on a daily basis. If you look at figure five of Mr. Romero's report, he assumed that approximately five of that would be coming from the Little Ark. And you can see on his figure five, the, the black line, it represents the stream flow, the actual stream flow from the valley center gauge in the years 2011 and 2012. And then the, the blue line is the observed flow, flow duration curve, which shows how often flow was over a given value. And then the orange line, you can see Mr. Romero assumed five CFS. A, a five CFS reduction from that, that flow based on his numbers, which is a little misleading in this case. Because it kind of implies that every day there will be five CFS less flow in the river caused by the pumping. And that is not really accurate based on these results.
How would infiltration from the river occur?
Well, the losing and gaining from the stream and infiltration is, is driven by the river stage. How high the, the stage of the river is, the, you know, I think somebody said yesterday, made the, the, the comment that water flows downhill. Well, the steeper the hill and the higher the hill, the faster it flows down. As you can see on this figure five, there's low flow times when the graph is down low, and then there's big spikes where we had a precipitation event or a much larger flow in the stream. And when when you have those high spikes, your head driving the water into the aquifer is much higher. And you're infiltrating at a, at a greater rate, much more water. When it's low, you're infiltrating at a low rate. So it's, it's not that every day you'd be losing five CFS from the river. It's on average throughout the year, you would lose five CFS. And again, that five CFS number is, is an assumption. We don't have a calculation of the exact value of what that infiltration, additional infiltration would be. So MDS is, is something that's applied on a daily basis by the regulatory authorities. We're talking about an average infiltration across the entire period of the year. So saying you're losing five CFS or there's an additional five CFS taken from MDS or, or something like that is not not an accurate representation of how it's actually going to occur.
And recognizing that Mr. Austin attempted to draw conclusions on impacts to minimum desirable stream flow based on this report. In your opinion, what conclusion can you actually reach about the impact of the pumping of alternative, excuse me, aquifer maintenance credits on minimum desirable stream flow in the Little Ark, Kansas River, based on Mr. Romero's report?
I don't believe that you can make an assumption regarding MDS on it. You can make the assumption that Mr. Romero made that, that there will be an additional five CFS of inflow on average through the year. But how that directly?
Your Honor, I hate to interrupt. I'm going to object and renew the motion and lemony. Yesterday at the hearing, when we asked what the testimony would be about today, we were told that it would be based on the rebuttal expert report that was filed by Mr. McCormick. And I don't think any of this testimony that he's raising now is in that rebuttal expert report. And indeed, when Mr. Baze attempted to testify as to issues that were somewhat outside the scope of his expert report, the city, and I quote, said it was shameless conduct by the district, end quote. And Mr. Olleen at the time said, we were trying to hide things, is what he said on the record, and you sustained that objection. And so our alternative position here is, and we've just filed a written motion and lemony to this effect, is that the city has had over a year, or not over a year, just under a year, actually, to supplement its expert reports, that if we're talking about testimony that was raised by Mr. Romero at the time of the initial hearing, the City of Wichita could have supplemented its expert reports and revised them. And KSA 60-226 allows for that, and there's a separate section that allows for the supplementing of expert reports. And so if you look at our motion, that's our argument here again, is that this was raised at the prior hearing, that when Mr. Baze tried to deviate a little bit from his expert report, the argument of undue surprise and unfairness was raised. And so that is our alternative motion and lemony that we're now raising at this point. We've just filed a written motion and lemony to that effect. We were not aware that we'd be deviating from this filed rebuttal expert report as what was proffered yesterday on the record. And so now we filed a written motion and lemony to that effect that should be filed of record.
Mr. McLeod?
Yes, to respond to that, first of all, we were all present yesterday in the hearing. And to, to correct counsel and his, his inadvertent misstatement of the record. I believe I was very clear yesterday in saying that the rebuttal testimony today would cover matters that were in the rebuttal expert reports. And also, I believe I very specifically said, and, and counsel can go back and have the reporter read it back if he needs to, to give him confidence that, that this was said. But I do believe that I also said that Mr. McCormick would be reviewing the testimony that Mr. Romero gave on the stand and the testimony of Mr. Austin, which he was also virtually present for. And, and look for any additional points that might not have been in the rebuttal section of his expert rebuttal reports that were filed indeed some time ago, but have not been admitted in evidence to this point. So I think that intention was very clearly stated on the record. And I think that all of the questions we have just gone through, in fact, are less directed at Mr. Romero's work as such than Mr. Austin's attempt to misuse Mr. Romero's work yesterday in his testimony, where Mr. Austin was mistaken about the conclusions that he could draw from the information in Mr. Romero's report. And Mr. McCormick's answer And Mr. McCormick's answers so far this morning have been directed to that mistakenness and that misuse by Mr. Austin of Mr. Romero's report, which didn't occur until yesterday. When, when, as I've said, all of Mr. Austin's testimony about minimum desirable stream flow came in over the city's objection, even though it had not been included as a topic of discussion anywhere in Mr. Austin's own expert report. So I think this is again, a case of, of the district applying grossly double standards. Doing one thing in its own case and then, you know, complaining and making objections and filing motions in an effort to suppress evidence that may be needed to correct misuse, which, which was indeed misuse sprung on the city yesterday by surprise. I think the motion is, is poorly founded. It's founded on on this statement of what counsel for the city said yesterday, which can be corrected by reference to the record. And baseless in that sense. And I believe that the motion is baseless in its entirety and should be overruled.
And, and I'll clear, clarify the record, to the extent that Mr. McLeod is responding to what Mr. Austin said yesterday. And especially to the extent that Mr. Austin's comments deviated to a degree from his expert report, we would agree that rebuttal testimony is proper to respond to that, that, that the city could not have properly prepared the district to, to let us know what, what that rebuttal would look like. But our position is that if it was a response to Mr. Romero's testimony and the city has had 11 months to prepare its response to that rebuttal or to that testimony of Mr. Romero, they've had 11 months to prepare that rebuttal, then they have essentially 11 months to decide exactly what it is they're going to say. And without having supplemented their expert report, which would have been appropriate, then alternatively, we have a few minutes, maybe a few hours, maybe a couple of weeks to respond and determine how, how we're going to respond to what the city is saying to Mr. Romero's report. And so instead of 11 months, we get a very short amount of time to then try and confer and plan a response. And so that's why the expert rules require you to supplement or amend your expert report within a certain timeframe if you're able to. And we're saying that because Romero testified a long time ago, the city was able to do so. But if we're responding to what Mr. Austin said, we completely acknowledge that's a different matter. And, and what Mr. McLeod said is, is a true statement that if it's a response to Mr. Austin, I think the scope of our objections is certainly lessened.
So Mr. McLeod, with the questions that you are asking, are you questioning Mr. Austin's use of Mr. Romero's report? Or are you questioning, in addition to that, the validity of Mr. Romero's report or testimony?
In all of the questions that were just asked and answered, all of those questions and the answers were directed at Mr. Austin's use of the information in Mr. Romero's report. That's what they were. And, and I'm surprised that counsel didn't notice that before preparing and filing his written motion. I would also, I would also add, if we're going to continue to have this, this back and forth over rebuttal testimony this morning, the city would be satisfied at this point to just mark and place in evidence the August 21st, 2019 review and rebuttal report that Mr. McCormick prepared that was circulated to all counsel, you know, more than a year ago. If, if we can just put that in evidence, then, then we can do that and we can, we can be done for the morning.
Can, can we confer just very briefly, your, your honor, on that suggest, suggestion? I think it sounds like a promising good suggestion, but unfortunately because of Zoom, I'm, I'm not in the same location with my co-counsel. And I, I really like to confer before we agree to that.
That's fair. We will go off the record briefly and Mr. Stuckey, I assume you can come back on live or use the chat feature to let us know when you're ready to reconvene.
Yes, it'll, it'll be no more than five minutes at most, so.
Okay, a quick five minute break. Thank you.
We're ready to resume.
Ready to resume? Okay, let's go back on the record. Mr. Stuckey?
All right, I, I will, this is Tom Adrian. I'll, I'll comment on that. We've, we've reviewed Mr. McCormick's rebuttal or evaluation dated August 21st, 2019. And we will agree with Mr. McLeod's suggestion that it be used in lieu of Mr. McCormick's testimony as to Mr. Austin. And that would be confined to the first three pages of that, I think it's a seven page report. And we would also in conjunction with that agreement, we would strike the testimony that Mr. McCormick has given this morning and use this, the introduction of those three pages in lieu of any rebuttal testimony. And should, should he want to keep that testimony that Mr. McCormick has given this morning, then we would want the right to cross-examine him as to the testimony that he's given thus far.
Mr. McLeod?
As a counter, that, that just fails in any form of adequacy. So please go ahead and, and rule on their motion and we'll struggle through this, this gamut of of harassment however we have to for the remaining hours of today's hearing.
I'm sorry, the rules are harassing you, but they are the rules.
So, Mr. McLeod, I'm sorry, it was just a little hard to hear you. So you, you do not wish to reach the agreement that Mr. Adrian suggested?
We don't.
So I believe where things stand, Mr. McLeod, is for Mr. McCormick's continued testimony to for today to be limited to responding to Mr. Austin or perhaps to other witnesses that we heard yesterday. Is that your understanding?
I, I actually haven't seen the written motion in limony that's been referred to. So I, I, I couldn't actually tell you what the motion is for. But the, the city's, the city's view is that we should be able to put on anything that's recovered, that's, that's actually been covered in these rebuttal expert reports since August of last, two years ago, actually. Plus, the line of questioning that we just covered with Mr. McCormick, we believe was, was completely and totally permissible. And in fact, it's in the record and should remain in the record. And if, if they want to cross Mr. McCormick about it, that's their right. But, you know, as, as I believe the city, as to the content of these rebuttal reports, we either should be able to put our reports in in whole, like everybody else has done. And then they've had them for, for over two years, right? So there's no, there's no possible surprise. Or we should be able to have Mr. McCormick testify to the content of these rebuttal reports, which our intent to have him do that is the only reason that we didn't offer his, his rebuttal report. Full text is an exhibit for admission and evidence in the case already.
And I guess maybe a point of clarification is helpful. If we agree just to admit this rebuttal expert report, does, does that end the matter? Does that preclude our right to cross-examination? I guess that wasn't clarified maybe for us as, as far as what that means. So I guess a clarification on that would, would be helpful as well. And then maybe, maybe I, I can't speak for our group, but maybe we could just agree to admit the entire report if it doesn't preclude cross-examination, or at least brief cross-examination on those limited points.
Right. The, the city's intent would be fully to allow that cross-examination to occur. Just as if we asked the witness all these questions and he answered them all as they are in the report, he would be able to cross him. He would be able to cross him to that same extent.
So do I understand that the two of you are in agreement? And tell me if I'm wrong. And I should note, I have also not seen the written motion in limony. So I, I am unable to address that specifically. But do I understand that, that you are in agreement that we admit the report dated August 21st, 2019 and allow subsequent cross-examination of Mr. McCormick? Then that would substitute for his testimony today?
That would substitute for further testimony today, but we would keep, and it would also be subject to cross the six or so questions that were asked and answered on him today.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to confer with my counsel on the record, but I think that if, if Mr. McLeod wants to introduce this supplemental expert report in lieu of further testimony by Mr. McCormick, and we're allowed to have at least a very limited cross as to the points strictly raised in the supplemental expert report, I think that's, we would allow the report in its entirety. But I, I would have to, I, I guess Mr. Adrian can confirm that for the record, since we didn't have a chance to confer on that point. But yes, if we're allowed to cross-examine based on the limited points in this, in this report, then I think we're fine with a report being admitted in its entirety.
Well, I, I would agree with that. And Tessa, would you agree or disagree with that?
I would agree with that. My understanding is that we're admitting the supplemental expert report in lieu of further direct testimony today. Just making sure I understand correctly.
That would be my understanding as well. And all of it, both the testimony that Mr. McCormick has given thus far today and what is in the content of his rebuttal report of 21 August, 2019 will be open and subject for cross.
And Mr. Stuckey, are you in agreement that the testimony already given today remains on the record and is subject to cross-examination?
Yes, it's subject to both cross-examination and Mr. Romero, who I believe is on this Zoom link. It's also subject to his rebuttal testimony as well, since it's now part of the record.
Okay, I, I Okay, I, I assume that counsel for the intervenors and counsel for DWR do not object to this agreement. Would either one of, would you like to let me know where you stand on that?
I, I do not object. I don't really have any. Sorry.
Sorry.
And Ms. Wendling, I did not hear from you.
I had no objection.
It sounds like that agreement is reasonable. And Mr. Stuckey, does that render your written motion in limine, which I have not seen, does it render that moot?
We'll, we'll withdraw our objection as to merely admitting the supplemental expert report again. Our argument was it still should have been raised on, on direct, since it was filed in, in response to our initial expert reports, but we'll withdraw as part of this agreement.
Okay, thank you. So that is what we will agree to going forward. I'm going to reiterate it for the record. Please, counsel, correct me if I am mistaken, but in lieu of further testimony from Mr. McCormick, I will admit in its entirety, his report dated August 21st, 2019, and that will be open to cross-examination in the future. The testimony Mr. McCormick has already given today will remain on the record, and it will also be open to future cross-examination. Have I left anything out?
That sounds almost entirely correct, Your Honor, and let's just, let's give it whatever city exhibit designation we're ready for in the line of numbering.
Okay, what would be the next city exhibit number?
Thinking maybe 29, the reporter may know better than I do at this point.
Nancy, can you run that down for us?
I can. Do you want me to do that now, or do you want just me to put the next number on it?
Well, just, we just need to have it designated what the next number is. We're not sure what that number is.
Okay, you need to give me a minute, Ben.
Thank you.
I believe Brian is correct. It is Exhibit 29.
Okay, so Exhibit 29 is admitted pursuant to agreement among counsel.
And Mr. McCormick is open for cross.
Mr. Stuckey, are you prepared to proceed with that?
Yes, we're prepared to proceed with a cross-examination, but I think Ms. Murray would, would get to go next.
Okay, Ms. Murray, are you prepared to proceed with that?
I don't have any questions for Mr. McCormick.
Okay. Mr. Stuckey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good morning, Mr. McCormick.
Morning, Mr. Stuckey.
Been a while since we, we visited about this matter. I just have a few follow-up questions, and I promise it won't be near as long as the last time we visited about this matter. There's just a few points in your supplemental expert report that I'd ask for your clarification on, so I'll try and run through them in order and be fair, fairly specific and confined in my testimony, or in my questions, so you can also be confined in your testimony as well in that regard and speed this process up. But at any rate-
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I would like to locate where Mr. McCormick's report is in the exhibit notebooks. Can someone point me to that?
I think it may actually need to be downloaded from the ASR website that DWR maintains. It was, it was posted, I believe, on the website, but has not been in the exhibit books.
Okay. Thank you. You may go ahead.
Oh, I am, I'm fine. We can, we can scan it and we can email it to all the parties very quickly, if that would be beneficial to, to everyone here, so we know what we're talking about. I have a copy in front of me that I printed off in preparation for today, actually printed it off last night and prepared last night. But if everyone would like us to email it, so it, so we all have the same thing in front of us, we can quickly do that. It would just take us three, a three-minute recess, if that would be helpful to Madam Hearing Officer.
At the risk of yet another three-minute delay, that would be very helpful to me. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll have it emailed, scanned and emailed out to the group within three or four minutes.
Okay. So we will go off the record for a few minutes while that's being done.
We're already back on the record, and I'm sorry it's been so, or I'm sorry, if we're still off the record, I just want to clarify our position here. It's been so long since I've looked at some of this stuff. I used to know it inside out, but in Volume Five, Exhibit 70, we have the city's rebuttal expert report in our notebooks that we prepared. I don't think it's in the city's notebooks, but it's actually in the district's notebooks, Volume Four, Exhibit 70.
I would have to say that got past me as well.
Okay, I was able to locate that. Does anyone else need a little time to receive that from Mr. Stuckey? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Stuckey, please go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. McCormick, I'd ask that you turn to the first page of your report, and I'll just ask you a few questions about some of the conclusions that you've raised in this report. In the very first one, you're responding to a comment that was apparently made by Mr. Austin on Page Four of his expert report and his conclusions. And Mr. Austin apparently had talked about issues with the modflow model and the fact that it could not look at individual impacts of wells with any certainty. You responded to that in, with, with several sentences. I'd ask that you read in, in that last full paragraph on that first page of your supplemental expert report, I'd ask that you read that last sentence where it starts with "the model accurately reproduces," if you could read that for the record.
Just a moment, I'm trying to find the right page, Mr. Stuckey. My internet connection's a little slow. I'm looking at it from the DWR webpage to make sure that I have the latest copy of the exhibit.
Yeah, and to, and to clarify the record, what I'm looking at, Mr. McCormick is your supplemental expert report. At the top of the exhibit I'm looking at, it says Burns and McDonnell. It's dated August 21st, 2019, and it's a letter to Brian McLeod, and I'm looking at that page, the bottom of that page.
All right, I'm at the August 21st, 2019 to Brian McLeod, and the bottom of that page, you asked me to read the last sentence, "The model accurately reproduces annual water levels measured in the basin storage area and therefore can be relied upon to predict water level impacts at specific locations." Is that correctly what you wanted read, sir?
That is, thank you. Can you clarify to me exactly how the model accounts for water levels measured in specific locations?
The model can be used to accurately measure water levels in specific locations within that four-by-four-hundred-foot grid. And there are numerous tools that can be used with the modflow model to interpolate specific location water levels.
And just to clarify, although there's additional tools that could be used, Burns and McDonnell did not look at individual well locations per se, other than this 400-by-400-foot square grid, just to clarify, I think what you told us earlier on the record, correct?
We looked at the individual, the actual locations and pumping values for wells in their actual geographic location. We did not attempt to evaluate individual drawdown impacts on surrounding wells within the model. There were a number of unknowns in that, and no, we did not go to that resolution of, of detail.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. And to move this along, if you could move to the second page of this supplemental expert report, again, it appears that Mr. Austin talks about how during the years from 1935 to 1979, the model was looking at one-mile-by-one-mile grids, but then after 1980, the model was able to take into account 400-foot-by-400-foot boxes, if you will. Is that an accurate statement of, of part of what Mr. Austin is saying, starting on the bottom of that first page and, and moving on into that second page? Is that, just in a nutshell, part of what he's saying?
I, I think it's a misinterpretation of exactly what was done. The model used a 400-by-400 grid, but the pumping from 1935 to 1979 was aggregated for one-mile areas. So it's not that the grid or anything of the model in the earlier years was, was larger. It's simply that the pumping was not taken at, as a refined level during those earlier years.
Okay, that, that clarifies. And in fact, if I were to quote you in the second line of your response, you said that the one-mile-by-one-mile-square area was, quote, "a standard methodology," end quote, in, in at that time period. Is that correct?
Yes, it is a standard methodology that's used even today. We were just looking at a model for GMD III that currently aggregates, using, using modern data. They're still aggregating the, the data to one-mile-by-one-mile squares.
If you would, to focus this in on something that I think you mentioned just a moment ago, could you read the second-to-last sentence of that first full paragraph on that second page? It's a, it's a sentence that starts "if greater than 400-foot." Could you read that for the record?
Yes. "If greater than 400-foot resolution is desired, there are numerous post-processing tools available for use with modflow that allow accurate water level interpolation," excuse me, interpolation within each individual grid cell.
So in other words, if one desired to have more specificity and, and look at a more narrow area, if you will, again, I, I understand that my terminology is not as precise or scientific as what you'd use, but in, in my simple mind, if we were to look at a more narrow area than 400-foot-by-400-foot, you're saying that there are post-processing tools available that could accomplish that if, if one chose, is that right?
Yes, there are.
And I think that by extension, and you've already answered this, is that those post-processing tools weren't engaged or considered by Burns and McDonnell, at least when doing the modeling in, in this particular case, is that right?
We did not do that because the, we didn't have all of the data that would apply to it, all of the depths of the domestic wells and the screened intervals of them, and, and even of the irrigation wells. And, you know, what their pump settings are, those are things that change. And, well, excuse me, the pump settings can change. You don't usually move a well once it's drilled. But we, we didn't have that information and didn't go to that level of detail for our evaluation.
If the district were to help furnish that additional data to Burns and McDonnell, do you think that those, that additional post-processing analysis would be helpful as, as further research or further work on this, on this matter?
I would not say that it would add significant value because, again, there are so many unknowns and conditions that change throughout the year. You know, the GMD could provide me a pump setting today for a well, and for some reason, an irrigator could change it next week, and then all of that data would have to be reevaluated. So I think there would be a very limited value to evaluating on a well-by-well basis throughout the entire wellfield.
Okay, that actually leads me to another thought or another question. Just to refresh my memory and, and remind everyone on the record, as, as far as things we talked about some time ago, isn't it true that when we're considering this data, we're looking at this data on an annual basis? And so in other words, it still wouldn't show what would occur during peak pumping periods and the impacts to individual wells during those peak pumping times, is that correct, as far as what the city did?
That is correct. The, the model is on annual time steps, and the index level- The index levels are applied annually. So the resolution and the data that is provided within the model is. Adequate and sufficient for evaluating the index levels.
Okay, let's go ahead and move along to. The next page of your report, page three.
All right.
And just and while you're looking for that, just so I'm clear. Because pump settings can change. Can one do the analysis based on well depth, which does not change? Could you do that further analysis that you just mentioned?
We could.
So anyway, moving on then to page three of of your supplemental expert report. If if you look at your conclusions at the bottom. There's a statement that's made about water quality, apparently by Mr. Austin. It looks like was made in his expert reports, and then there's a response. That you you give at that last full paragraph on the bottom of page three, do you follow me where where I'm reading?
Yes, sir.
And. Apparently, Mr. Austin, and I think he said something obviously about it on the record yesterday about water quality. And I assume that you were able to listen to that testimony yesterday as well. But anyway, there's there's a statement that he he made about the movement of the chloride plume and you provide a response, and it looks like your response was. That Mr. Austin should have examined this particular study by. Klaeger, Kelly and Ziegler about chloride movement. In essence, I believe that was the the first part of your response, is that right?
Yes, reading my response that mentions that report, which I believe has been introduced into the record and. Has been referred to numerous times during testimony.
And do you know off the top of your head, just just to refresh my memory, what the date of that report was?
I believe. That the data report is or the number of the that report is 2016 5165. I may be inaccurate there. But that would indicate that the report was published in 2016.
Okay, then I'll just ask a a simple question without having to be precise on the date. That report was indeed published prior to. The city's proposal with respect to aquifer maintenance credits, correct?
Yes.
And in fact, that report was filed prior to the city proposing to lower the minimum index level, correct?
Yes.
And in fact, that report appears to look at movement of chloride between 1990 through 2008, is that also correct?
That's what the title says, yes.
I would ask that you read that next sentence, which is a conclusion in the report, starting with additionally, if you could read. That for the record.
Sure. Additionally, the results of modeling these scenarios indicate that eastward movement of the Burton Plumb could be slowed by the additional artificial recharge at the phase one sites. And that decreasing pumping along the Arkansas River or increasing water levels. Could retard the movement of chloride and may prevent further encroachment into the southern part of the well field area.
So just to break this down a little bit, it refers to the fact. That this study or this report is about phase one sites, is that right? That's what it says verbatim, correct, from what you quoted?
It it talks about phase one sites, but it's not referring only to phase one sites, no.
But just to clarify today's record. What we're talking about with aquifer maintenance credits and the city's current proposal, that has to do. With an extension of phase two, we're not talking about phase one credits, at least with the issues. Before the hearing officer today, is that right?
I believe that the proposal states that phase one wells. Are excluded. So it would only deal with phase two.
Okay, thank you, that that's helpful. But I think without beating a dead horse, I think the point is clear. That this report that talks about the movement of fluoride. And the potential harmful impacts of that movement doesn't consider. What would occur in the event the minimum index level was lowered? And the city were to utilize this aquifer maintenance credit approach, correct?
I would agree that it does not deal with the aquifer maintenance credits. And I would have to review the report to remember exactly what scenarios they modeled. But I I know they did model levels with lower water levels in the well field area. So they did consider lowered water levels.
Okay, and I and we we may wish to clarify that point later, but for now. I'll just move along. Let's go ahead and move on to the next page of your supplemental expert report. Page four.
Okay, I'm there.
Toward the bottom of of the supplemental expert report, you have what's called point three, is that right?
Yes.
And I'm going to quote the last sentence of, I think these would be Mr. Romero's conclusions, I'm going to quote the last sentence. Of Mr. Romero's conclusions, because I think that's what's helpful for the record. Mr. Romero says, however, Burns and McDonnell does not present an analysis quantifying hydrologic effects. From pumping that could cause drawdown to that proposed minimum index level. And then could you read also your response for the record, it's just one sentence?
The proposed minimum index levels were developed by taking the modeled lowest groundwater levels. And adding a contingency as described in section two of the proposal.
So in other words, Mr. Romero's last statement. That. This this analysis was not presented, essentially you're acknowledging. That that analysis was not specifically done, but instead a contingency was added, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. I was merely explaining in my response. How the groundwater levels were done or excuse me, were developed. And I believe. Based on that comment. Mr. Romero is providing a critique that he could. That he recommends a a different way of quantifying the hydrologic effects.
Did you personally quantify or study the hydrologic effects? Of lowering to the new minimum index level, did you personally help with that work?
Yes, I did.
And and where in your proposal, does it demonstrate that that modeling occurred to the new proposed minimum index level?
Well, I I think it comes down to there's there's multiple ways to skin a cat. We. Developed those levels through a way through the method that we used, Mr. Romero is simply saying. That he would look at it in a different way.
It it and and just to clarify the record, in your proposal, you just. You showed some drought pumping, but you didn't do the same modeling or quantifying of hydrologic effects that Mr. Romero did. In in his study, is that a true statement?
Yes, he he did a different type of quantification than we did and went about it in a different way. And I believe he reached pretty much very similar conclusions that we did.
And so in other words, you didn't have reason to disagree with Mr. Romero's conclusions in that regard, is that correct?
I'm not saying I didn't disagree with. Any particular point of Mr. Romero's, I'm simply saying Mr. Romero went with. A a different method of quantifying, which. Is likely also valid.
Right, and that's and that's what I was speaking to, that specific. Level of calculations that Mr. Romero did, those specific calculations that we're discussing right now. You didn't have reason to disagree with you, you saw it as valid, correct?
I'm not saying that anything that Mr. Romero did is not valid in this statement. I'm simply saying he approached it from a different angle, if you have a specific. Question or quick question about one of his analyses. I can say whether I agree or disagree with that, but I'm not prepared to make a blanket statement that I agree with everything that Mr. Romero said.
I I think we're we're essentially saying the same thing, and so. I'll move on to the next page. Moving on to the next page of of the report. It's in it's point four, I guess it starts on the fourth page and it continues into the fifth page of Mr. Romero's report. Mr. Romero talks about point four. And he says, the assessment provides insight to hydrologic effects in the context of the new pumping that could occur. If the minimum index levels are lowered, and he talks about some of his analysis in that regard. And you then have a response, I would ask that you read for the record the second sentence of your response.
All right, as such, is that the one you're talking about that starts as such?
I'm sorry. I'm on the top of page five of your expert report. I'm talking about point point four, which started on the bottom of page four, but then it continues on to the top of page five. And so I'm looking at the first whole paragraph on page five, the second sentence of. Yeah, the second and third sentence, if you could read both those sentences, actually, that'd be.
Okay, as such, the city can pump 40,000 acre feet per year regardless of where water levels are with respect to the minimum index levels. It should be clarified that changing to the proposed minimum index levels only facilitates diversion of recharge credits. Which is groundwater that would otherwise not exist in aquifer storage without ASR operations.
So in other words, what you're talking about here. Is the concept of artificial recharge, is that right? Because you're talking about water that would otherwise not exist in the aquifer, is that is that right?
I think what I'm talking about is that the. Index levels, whether 1993 or proposed, only apply to pumping recharge credits. They don't apply to pumping the city's native right.
I'm referring to the second part of that sentence where it says, which is groundwater that would otherwise not exist. In aquifer storage without ASR operations. And when you're referring to ASR operations, at least as it's used in that sentence. Are you talking about physical recharge as found in ASR phase two?
The index levels, based on the proposals, would apply to AMC's or physical recharge.
And again, I not sure I want to revisit this entire consideration or debate we had, but. How how does water that would otherwise not exist in the aquifer? How does it get placed in the aquifer based on an aquifer maintenance credit?
Based on an aquifer maintenance credit, the water is diverted from the Little Ark River. Treated through a treatment system. If it is a physical recharge credit, it is put into the ground. And left there for some period of time and then pumped back out and sent somewhere for use. If it is an AMC. We are credited with leaving. The water in the ground and. It is sent directly for use.
And just to clarify, though, let's say that we have an aquifer. That contains 100 gallons and. But there's capacity for 200 gallons in this aquifer, you follow me so far?
Yes.
And let's say that. In the event of physical recharge, we inject 50 gallons of water into that aquifer, now we have 150 gallons in that aquifer, you follow me?
Yes.
And in that sense, the 50 gallons that we injected. Otherwise did not previously exist in the aquifer, using your language, is that right?
Yes.
But just to clarify, and again, I think we're saying the same thing, but just so we have a clear record with an aquifer maintenance credit. When if if we had 100 gallons in this hypothetical in the aquifer. In the process of accumulating an aquifer maintenance credit, when we ship this water off to town. We're not actually putting 50 gallons of water into this aquifer in my hypothetical, right?
In your hypothetical, yes, but an AMC is functionally equivalent in that we're not pumping those 50 gallons of water either.
All right, and I'll take away the.
Place of pumping that water, we're pulling it from the river and treating it and sending it direct, so it's a functional equivalent of putting it into the ground.
Okay, you answered my my question, Mr. McCormick, and I'll take away the mystery. I'm not going to revisit the functional equivalent concept, so we'll go ahead and move on. Days purposes, so let's move on to point number six.
I'm sorry, sir, you cut out, what point did you want to move on to?
Point number six, please.
Okay.
Point, just because it's it's been a few hours since I read this late last night. Can you capture for us on the record what it was that Mr. Romero was saying in point number six? I think his point, I actually, I just read it and refreshed my memory, it it appears to me that his point was. That based on the modeling that occurred. And the way the USGS model was calibrated. It would have a tendency or potential for overestimating stream depletion. Which he said would translate to an underestimation of aquifer storage depletion, is that in essence what his position was? In point number six?
Yeah, I believe so, based on just reading it through quickly here.
And then if we turn to your response, as as I read through your response, and again. I'm I I'm not an expert, I'm obviously. This is this is the kind of thing you've done for a long time, so if I oversimplify this, I apologize. In your response, you indicate. That the model, the USGS model that was used by the city. Engaged a river package to look at the Little Arkansas and Arkansas rivers, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I think what you. You mentioned in your response is that there's a different type of package. That the city could have used, but chose not to, which is the stream flow routing package, is that right?
That is not correct. Your your explanation of that there is a different stream flow routing package is correct. But it's actually the USGS, when they put the model together, chose to use the river package and. Their model uses the river package and and that is the model that we use. their model uses the river package and, and that is the model that we used with the city. So it's not that the city made a choice to use the river over the stream, it's the developer to the model.
That, that clarifies for me a lot. So in other words, you use the USGS model and in, in another part of your expert report, I'm actually flipping back to page four of your expert report, just very quickly to clarify that point. You indicate under point two, and I'm quoting, "All the files used by Burns and McDonald for the city's accounting model and drought model use the original USGS concept." So you clarify that exact point in, in the supplemental expert report that you just built off the exact USGS model, is that, is that right?
That's correct. There was some sort of a glitch, which was addressed by Mr. Romero in his testimony. That he thought that possibly we had some difficulty in our files, but we checked our files and I believe Mr. Romero checked his files and we were all using the original USGS model.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. So now, moving back to page five of your expert report where we're talking about the differences of the river package and the stream flow routing package, and I apologize if I wasn't precise in my question. The city used the USGS model, which is the river package. But what you're saying here is that it's possible to also utilize the stream flow routing package to accomplish some of this modeling, is that right? If, if one chose to?
Yes, one could choose to use the stream flow routing package instead of the river package.
And just
That would, that, now let me explain what that would involve. That's basically redeveloping the model. You would have to change all of the river cells within the model to stream flow cells and then recalibrate the model from, from the start. Because it's a significant change in the framework of the model.
Right, and that's
Like an easy thing that you could do in a day or so.
Okay, and I think that's what I understand you to be saying at the bottom of your response. I'm quoting you, you say, quote, "Converting the model from the river package to the stream flow routing package and recalibrating would require a substantial amount of time and expense," end quote. You just mentioned that that's something that couldn't be done in a day. As far as the work that would go into doing that, how long? And again, no one's going to hold you to this, because I, I understand how it is in law. Sometimes you don't know how long it will take to research something until you start researching it. And I'm sure the same is true in your world, that it's, it's impossible to really know how long that process would take with any certainty until you're, you're in the middle of it. But do you have any idea, an answer to my question?
My off the cuff response is to, to, to change to the stream flow routing package, recalibrate and have it peer reviewed to the level of the current USGS model, I would suspect would take in excess of a year, certainly to to get it fully recalibrated, reviewed and, and agreed upon.
Okay, and just also to have a clear record though, and you, you answered this in, in your response already, this, this is, this is answered. But you say that the river package, which was utilized by the city, the USGS river package, does not account for the river going dry, whereas the stream flow package, which was not used, can account for the river going dry, is that right?
They both operate in different ways. The, and I think what Mr. Romero was stating with his comment is that it would potentially show a better framework for going dry. So.
Yeah, and I think that's exactly what you'd say. Yeah, I, just to have a clear record here, because you say it and I can, I can quote, have you quote your exact language in your response here, but in essence, what you say is the river package does not specifically account for the stream, for the river going dry, whereas the stream flow package, and I'm going to quote, as, quote, "as the stream flow routing package will account for the river going dry and stop in all infiltration to the aquifer," end quote. And so you're drawing a distinction between the two, correct?
Yes, that would be a correct statement.
And so let me just ask you this and, and follow up to your, your point. You said that it would, it would take a lot of effort and a lot of time to do this analysis where you're, you're, you convert to this stream flow routing package. Let me just ask this. Could you learn something from a basic sensitivity analysis rather than a full calibration? Basically, a sensitivity analysis with a stream conversion? And is it true that that would actually take a lot less effort? And that could be something more easily done, just a sensitivity analysis?
A, just doing a sensitivity analysis would be easier to do than what I described previously, just a minute ago. But a sensitivity analysis has been done on this previously. The USGS did that and documents it in their report.
But did the sensitivity analysis that USGS performed, it didn't account specifically for the river going dry, is that right?
I can't speak to exactly what it accounts for at this time.
Did you do any kind
But a sensitivity analysis, a sensitivity analysis wouldn't really do that anyway. It would, a sensitivity analysis would determine how sensitive water levels and, and flows in the model are to the conductance and inputs from the rivers. It, it's kind of apples and oranges. It's, it's not actually a sensitivity analysis wouldn't pick out just if the river's dry, what does that do to the model? It has more to do with the interaction between the, the rivers and the groundwater. So I, I don't believe that the, to answer your, try and answer your question, I don't believe that a sensitivity analysis would provide the results of what I
Mr. McCormick, I think you froze for just a moment. Did, did he freeze for anybody else?
I just described of changing it to the I seem to have, everybody froze there for a minute, I apologize.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that your, your statement was accurately captured in the record. It was about the last 10 seconds of your last statement, you froze just for a second.
Okay. A, a sensitivity analysis would not specifically deal with the river going dry. It would deal with the interaction between the groundwater and the, the stream and how sensitive the model was to inputs from that. So a, a sensitivity analysis would not evaluate specifically on the, the river going dry.
And just to clarify though, you can define the sensitivity, sensitivity to address the conversion of the river going dry. Just to clarify, that is something that could be done, right?
As I said, I believe the sensitivity analysis has been done, which includes an evaluation.
I'll ask that question. Did you specifically, in the sensitivity analysis you performed or Burns and McDonald performed, did you do a sensitivity analysis that accounted for the river going dry?
To clarify, Burns and McDonald did not do a sensitivity analysis. The USGS did when they developed the model. And, and as I said, the sensitivity is the full gamut of flow. It's not specific to a dry condition in the river.
Are you able to quickly point us to how or where the USGS accounted for the river going dry in any kind of sensitivity analysis with its river flow model?
I, again, a sensitivity analysis is not specific to one condition of the river. I believe that in the USGS report, which I believe is at the front of this. I'm not sure what's included in the expert witness, so I shouldn't say that. In the, I can't remember the name of the, the report right now and the, or the number, but the model report that the USGS put together in 2013, there is a section titled sensitivity analysis, or some similar term, that specifically refers to what they did with their sensitivity and what they determined was, the model was sensitive to.
Okay, for today's purposes, I'll, I'll just go ahead and move along to point number eight, start of the next page.
Okay, I'm at point number eight.
Point number eight, there's a point raised by Mr. McCormick, and then you have a response. And in that response, I'm going to, you, you, you capture that the goal of an AMC is to keep the aquifer as full as possible, but then in your third sentence of your response, you, starting with pumping that would reduce the water levels, could you read that for the record?
Pumping that would reduce the water levels to proposed minimum index levels would only occur in the event of a significant drought. And that result would be higher water levels, the majority of the time, and lower water levels during drought periods when the flows in the Arkansas River or Arkansas River, that result in infiltration of chlorides would also be lower.
Okay, I'm going to start with the first sentence you, you read for the record. You said that pumping to the, reduce, to the new minimum index levels would occur only in the event of a significant drought, end quote. That's essentially what you say there, correct?
Yes.
But just to clarify the record here, the proposal doesn't specify, there's, there's no limitation in the sense that it's a condition of granting the city's proposal that you can only pump to the new minimum index level during the time of an extreme drought, right? That's not a condition that's asked for in your proposal, correct?
I believe you are correct, yes.
Okay. And to also further clarify, you indicate that it's better to keep the aquifer full the majority of the time. And certainly, we've had this, this academic debate for a long time, and I understand that concept. But then you go on to say that indeed, during the time of an extreme drought, the city would indeed most likely withdraw its aquifer maintenance credits. And at that point is when the city would pump down to the new minimum index level. In essence, is that, is that what you're capturing in your statement?
Could, could you state that again, please?
I think what you're saying in your statement is, at least with the city's planning or, or considerations they've made is, is although the city would hope to keep the aquifer full the majority of the time, I think is what you're saying in this paragraph, during the time of an extreme drought, it's, it's theoretical or possible that the city would withdraw its aquifer maintenance credits and pump down to the new minimum index level. Is that in essence what you're saying?
Yes, I believe that's a correct statement of it.
And so my question is, is this, did you model what would happen in the event of an extreme drought? And what would occur if the city is to withdraw enough aquifer maintenance credits out to pump down to the new minimum index level? Did you, did you model that? And, and indicate the hydrologic impacts of, of such changes?
I, I think we discussed this just a few minutes ago, where we said we did a different approach to it. And Mr. Romero did a similar approach to, I believe, what you're describing.
All right, I'll move on. That last sentence, you say the net result would be higher water levels, the majority of the time. And again, we, we don't need to revisit that. We've talked about that a lot. But then the second phrase you, you indicate is that at water levels during drought periods, when the flow in the Arkansas River, that result in infiltration of chlorides would also be lower. Can you show me where specifically Burns and McDonald in its proposal modeled or addressed the infiltration of chlorides in, in Burns and McDonald's modeling or in its, in its proposal itself? I, I'm not interested in additional modeling that's, that's occurred that we're not privy to, that's happened in the last 11 months. I'm interested in what we had before us in the initial hearing and in the initial proposal. Can you tell us where Burns and McDonald would have modeled chloride movement as it would be impacted by lowering to the new minimum index level and withdrawing aquifer maintenance credits during the time of an extreme drought?
We did not model chloride migration in that context that you just stated.
Thank you. If we can move on then to the next point that, that's found here, which is point number nine. There's, there's an academic debate here about whether or not to utilize a simplified accounting. And I, I completely get your response and, and your response is, you know, wait a minute. We had this discussion with GMD2 and others and other, and, and everyone was, was saying that we should do a more simplified accounting approach, that the accounting approach we've used in the past was quite complicated. Let's do a more simplified accounting approach. Am I characterizing what you're saying in your response, just in a nutshell at least?
I, I believe so, yes. I believe that's a good characterization.
Okay, and so I think what Mr. Romero then said, and I'm going to quote him, last sentence of, of point nine. He says, "If a simplified approach is necessary," end quote. So first of all, he's talking about, he's assuming in this last statement that, that we would be employing a simplified approach, is that right? That he says if it's necessary, and, and that's the preparatory clause of that sentence. So he's assuming that we're, for the remainder of that sentence, we're talking about a simplified approach, is that right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, okay. So then he goes on to, to say, "We recommend development of a response function that accounts for both low and high water levels in attempt to improve the simplified accounting method over varying aquifer conditions." So in other words, he's saying that we should account for a, we, we should have just basically two considerate, additional considerations. Account for low water levels and, and high water levels in this simplified accounting approach. Is that what Romero, Mr. Romero appears to be trying to say here?
I believe that this statement is confusing the physical recharge accounting and the AMC accounting. AMCs would only be able to be accumulated at low water levels. Or pardon me, at high water levels. Because the, the city's proposal clearly states that the city must do physical recharge when it has the capacity to do physical recharge. So I, I believe that that is, is, is part of the confusion in this statement. But I believe what he's saying is that if a simplified approach is being taken for both, then physical recharge um, then physical recharge should account for changes in water level.
Okay, and, and maybe my memory is incorrect. I thought with the respect to your aquifer maintenance credits, you were using, uh, you were using an accounting based on a lower water level. I thought that's what was captured in your proposal.
Um, the proposal states that we have, or the city has to prioritize physical recharge. So if the water levels are low, um, then physical recharge is occurring. If the water levels are high and they can't physically recharge due to capacity in the aquifer, um, that is when.
Am I the only one that lost, Mr.?
I'm, I can still hear you. Um. My internet connection is having problems. Jen, I need you off the computer, please. Am I back?
Yeah, miss.
I apologize, I have kids doing homeschooling and things, and I think we're over uh overtaxing my internet connection. Uh, let me try and, and rephrase that or start over.
No, I, I, let me just say for, for the record here, Mr. McCormick, it, it makes me smile and it makes me feel so much more normal because if I had a dollar for every time that's happened to me during a Zoom call, um, I would actually be a rich person. So yeah, the, the kids overtax the internet with a video game or, or a video they're watching or whatever it may be, or their homework, so I completely identify, so no big deal.
Okay, I, I apologize again anyway, uh, but thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Um, did you lose my whole response, or should I, should I just start over, or what's gonna work best?
You know, my question was, was uh maybe a little lengthy, maybe I'll just ask a more specific question and, and refocus this, and if you feel the need to uh raise additional points, uh, by all means, I'm not gonna preclude you, but add, just to be, to be clear here, in the accounting approach for AMCs, the approach did not take into account both a low and w- high water condition or, or, and the simplified accounting methodology that you're proposing in general doesn't take into account low and high water conditions uh and allow for that, right?
Uh, it, it, it does, uh, it's not within the math because uh, the cities require to do physical recharge when they can, which is at low water levels. The only time they can collect AMCs is at high water levels. Uh, so it is accounting for water levels because the accounting is only done at high water levels for AMCs.
You know, I, I think that if we choose to have uh Mr. Romero um clarify what he meant in, in his statement here, we certainly can. Um, but just for our purposes today, I'm gonna go ahead and move on. Um, so I, I believe the second two points, or I'm sorry, not the second two, that's, strike that from the record. The last two points that you raise in your expert report, where we see expert report scenario B, page six, mentioned, and expert report scenario C, page six, mentioned. Uh, in essence, the response you give is that the groundwater modeling files utilized for the development of the conclusions were not made available. And certainly I can produce it for the record um if we need to, but Mr. McLeod sent an email that said that those concerns were resolved. In other words, you were able to look at the model files and address those uh model files with Mr. Romero. Is that a true statement?
Yes, we uh, after I had submitted this report, uh, we were able to set up a meeting with Mr. Romero and have a discussion about these, and he uh provided us with spreadsheets and, and information uh to clarify these points.
You know, I don't, uh, that, that's really helpful, Mr. McCormick. Thank you uh so much for your time. I don't have any further questions.
Any questions from Ms. Welling?
I have just a few, Mr. McCormick. I'm not sure if you have the exhibits or the proposal in front of you. But in the city's exhibit one, the proposal, they have attached USGS um 2013 dash 5042, which I believe is the USGS report regarding this model that you are probably familiar with.
That, that sounds uh correct to me, yes.
And in Mr. Austin's report, he cites to the model limitations found on page 72 of that report, which says, um, the groundwater flow model was criticized using a grid with cells measuring 400 feet by 400 feet. Model results were evaluated on a relatively large scale and cannot be used for detailed analysis such as simulating water level drawdown near a single well. A grid with smaller cells would be needed for such a detailed analysis. Do you disagree with the USGS report?
I, I'm sorry, Mrs. Welling, you, you cut in and out there a number of times, and I believe I missed part of your question.
Okay, do you have a copy of the exhibit available to you or the report available to you?
Of the um 2013 5042 report? Or Mr. Austin's comments?
I was pulling it directly from the USGS report. It is probably also in his comments. On the first page of the text of Mr. Austin's report, under review of reports, the last paragraph, he also quotes the same language. So you could take it from either location. As this is a statement from the USGS report, my question is, do you disagree with the USGS?
I'm sorry, I'm still trying to track down the exact sentence. Uh, you cut out in the middle of it, and I, I was unable to hear your question fully.
I'll wait until you find model limitation number two on page 72 of the USGS report.
What exact page number is that in the USGS report, Mrs. Welling?
It is on page 72 in the section model limitations. And the limitations are numbered, and so it's number two.
I'm getting there, I apologize for taking so long.
That's okay.
All right, I'm there. Model limitations.
So my question for you is, do you disagree with model limitation number two?
As I said, I think that uh there are numerous tools that can be used with this for further evaluation at a uh more refined level. So to that extent, I would disagree that there, there are ways to refine this down without refining the, the grid to smaller cells.
So you can add on to the model to get that further definition?
Uh, it's using a different tool to evaluate the model output than, than just the model results.
And did you use any such tool when you were preparing the proposal?
Uh, no, I did not.
I have no further questions.
Mr. McLeod?
I don't think I have any further questions for the witness.
Okay. Mr. Stuckey? This, I guess it would be um Ms. Murray.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Stuckey?
I, I don't, I don't think we have any further questions for this witness, so.
Okay, then, Mr. McCormick, thank you for your participation today. And you are dismissed?
Thank you.
So my understanding, Mr. McLeod, was that that was the extent of rebuttal testimony that we were going to um have today. Was that your understanding?
Yes, I'm glad we accomplished something today, so that was it.
Well, and again, I apologize for the delay, for my my continued learning curve on new technology and how to make sure everybody's covered. That will conclude the proceedings for today and for this week.
Before you conclude, can I, can I just raise one point on the record?
Okay.
I, I guess it's, th- this is the question, I think it's consistent with uh what we put in our, our written motion to exclude, and again, the reason we didn't file our, our written motion to exclude um uh expert witness testimony that was outside of the original expert testimony, the reason we didn't file that motion earlier we, was because we had no reason to know if the city was even going to attempt such an action, so if you look at the, what we're asking for by way of relief in that motion, uh, you know, our first round of relief we asked for was to have any such additional uh opinions be stricken, but alternatively, we said that in the event, there are gonna be new opinions that the city's had 11 months to prepare and create, and we're gonna have now, I guess, uh, a week and a half perhaps to respond to. I guess all I would ask is, our alternative request is that the city give us some indication of what those new opinions are gonna be, or any additional witnesses the city is gonna raise, and so we can have a short time to prepare, since the city's now had 11 months to decide how it's, how it's gonna respond to at least our case in chief, so uh, that's, that's my request, that we get as much notice as we can in this short amount of time, if, if such new testimony isn't stricken, and, and indeed to not mince words, that's what we're asking for in our motion.
And Mr. McLeod?
Um, well, still having not seen the motion, um, it's, it's difficult to address what's in it or not, uh, but I think that you have adequately addressed uh the so-called first round of relief with respect to striking, because I think there were no new opinions in the live testimony that Mr. McCormick presented in the six or so questions uh we managed to ask today before the effort to, to suppress his testimony began. Uh, nor were there really any new opinions uh when we, we shifted from that to simply going to the content of his 21 August 2019 report, which has been in the hands of everybody uh low these many months and indeed years. And as I said yesterday, and, and I thought thought we had touched upon again today, like any further rebuttal evidence that the city uh might need to offer would be directed at the testimony of intervenors that we all heard yesterday for the first time. Uh, there was a, a tremendous amount of material offered, and as of, as of this moment, I can't really tell anybody uh what of that, I think we might need to rebut because it all happened only yesterday. And it's not a matter of all these months and months and months that council is asserting, it happened yesterday. Um, I was here yesterday virtually, I think everybody was, and I kind of saw how, how all of that went. And much of it, I think, was uh, was testimony that that nobody but perhaps interveners' counsel uh might have anticipated. So that's, that's what we're looking at further is, is reviewing that, seeing whether there is some rebuttal called for as to some part of that. I don't have a sense yet whether the city will or won't feel a need to offer rebuttal, but if we do, that will be the substance, the body of substance we're looking at in terms of identifying any rebuttal. Uh, I would also like to add while we're on the record, that in trials and hearings, if it is a protocol, some would consider it part of, of normal hearing decorum, almost universally followed by trial lawyers. That remarks are directed to the hearing officer and never by counsel between themselves while the hearing is live and on the record. And I, I would urge that we try to follow that protocol when we come back for further stages of this hearing, because I, I think it's a good protocol, and it advances civility and practice.
I guess in response to that, I'm not sure who or what that was directed toward. Um, we totally agree that any objections or motions in that regard should be uh uh provided to the hearing officer and directed toward the hearing officer, and we couldn't agree with that more. Um, and actually, the second part of what Mr. McLeod said, we also agree with, that to the extent the city is responding to new testimony that was brought by the intervenors in the last few days, we do think um it makes sense and it's appropriate for the city. Um, depending on what the scope of that response is, that it is appropriate for the city to, to so respond, depending on, on how that scope is defined. Um, but all we're asking is that the city will have a week and a half to try and determine how it's gonna respond to uh the intervenor's testimony, whereas if we find out for the first time at the hearing how the city plans to respond, the rest of us will get a matter of minutes or, or maybe a matter of hours to try and uh determine what additional rebuttal we want to that rebuttal from the city. So all we're asking for is within that, the, this next week and a half, when, when the city um has a sense for how they wish to respond to the intervenors, that they notify us and let us know, so we can also um have some level of preparation.
Okay, Mr. Stuckey and, and everyone, I think we can address those logistics, they're, they're a fair subject for discussion. Um, we will do that after we have um closed the record on the proceedings today. We need to reconvene um just with counsel and with me to discuss those things, so we will um take those up. And other than those matters, in other words, the logistics going forward, um, is there anything else anyone needs to mention before we close for today? Okay, hearing done. I thank everyone for their participation. Um, this will conclude these proceedings for today, and we will resume at a future date. The record is now closed, thank you.
Would you like me to have Veronta send a, a separate zoom again for just us?
That would be great, thank you, Stephanie.
And Your Honor, you don't need me for that, correct?
I do not, thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, bye-bye.